This morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and move to item number three on the agenda. Ask for approval of today's agenda.
Make a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number four, utility permits, secondary roads.
Utility permits that I know of. Secondary roads wise, people from Actley will care. S-56 is still moving along. They should be starting their concrete patching on Monday. And then after the fourth, they're gonna start milling it, so then the road will be a little rougher. So you got a while, but things are progressing well. We finished our interviews today for our new applicant, so hopefully by the next meeting I'll have some before you guys are there. And they got one loop done, I'm putting rock on the gravel roads too.
Okay.
Making progress.
They've been shoulder-ing too?
Yes. Not regularly, but yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Item number five, public comment. This is a time to comment about anything that's not on the agenda today. Julie?
Oh, no.
Okay.
No, they're not, it's on the agenda.
Okay.
We'll get there.
All right. Next, item number six, ask for approval of minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of June 20th, 2018.
I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item seven, approval of claims for payment on June 27th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 27th, 2018 claims for payment.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have a couple fireworks applications. The first is Robert and Patricia Gurkey.
I will make a motion to approve the fireworks permit application for Robert and Patricia Gurkey. The dates to be displayed will be July 7th with the rain date of July 8th. And the location of the display will be at 19747 205th Street. The west side of the lake away from campers.
I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the applications, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have an application from Junior Prusha in Union. I spoke with Junior and advised him that the application, he was asking us to supersede the local ordinance on fireworks. So he understood we would not be considering it because of state code with fireworks and local code, that if the city wasn't able to grant him one, that we were not going to act on something that superseded the city ordinance. So that item will be removed.
Okay.
Item number nine is our fiscal year 1819 appropriations resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 1819 appropriations resolution at 95%.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Some of that reason would be when we originally budgeted the wages, we budgeted higher than we were paying.
Okay.
So granted, I don't know if the 95%, I didn't do the math to break it down, but 95, I don't believe we need to budget a full 100% if that's what it was based off of.
Okay.
And we can approach it again later if need be.
Okay.
Right. Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 10, is resolution for inter-fund operating transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for inter-fund operating transfers.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call Nancy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number 11 is advanced issuance of payments resolution for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
I'll move to approve the resolution for fiscal year 2018, 19 for advanced issuance of payments.
I'll second it.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Nancy for roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I have item number 12, resolution for budget appropriation adjustments within the same service area.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution for budget appropriation adjustments within the same service area.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Nancy, roll call?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next item is joint venture agreement with Green Belt Home Care.
I will make a motion to approve the joint venture agreement with Green Belt Home Care.
I will second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
This is...
I know...
Due to the change of ownership, Hanson Family Hospital has submitted a letter stating that they no longer want to be owner, part-owner of Green Belt Home Care. So now this agreement is just between the city of Eldora and Hardin County as owners. Hardin County has a 75% share and the city of Eldora will have 25% share in Green Belt Home Care.
Julie? Okay. Mayor Dunn, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, I don't want to add anything, but my only question is, is the JV agreement, I think the last document I saw was called Bylaws or Medicare bylaws, which are also another agreement, a joint venture agreement, or are we talking about the same document?
The joint venture agreement is the one that I understand needs to be approved in order for Green Belt Home Care to continue serving after July 1st.
And to file their annual Medicare, Medicaid...
Okay, great, I don't, I haven't, the city should, never mind, I'll check it out.
The city's attorney, yeah, I think your attorney has been in on the emails.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be, there could be some emails I'm unaware of, so.
Okay. You're welcome. Any further discussion? Hearing none, ask for roll call vote Nancy?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Item 14, we, I'm gonna ask the table until after our performance review of Jody Mesh. So...
So we'll be reconvening yet today?
Yep.
Okay. So I need to motion, make a motion to table that?
Yes, please.
Okay. I will so move.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have item 15, I have two changes of status from the sheriff's office.
Move to approve the change of status of Michael Brace, Sheriff's Office Correctional Officer, hired, $13.12.
Second it.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Move to approve Sarah Knott, Communications Operator, $13.12, hired, permanent, part-time.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Next, yes, sir, ma'am?
Do, it always said they're permanent, part-time, do they have, they have actually full-time employees or they're just permanent, part-time? It just seems like a lot of them are permanent, just wondering.
Okay.
You may not know that.
I, I know there's a handful of permanent, full-time communications officers.
Permanent, part-time?
No, I'm, she asked if they're full-time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there are. Yep. Okay, the next item I have is appointment to the Board of Health.
Do you have Ashley Ammon? Okay.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the employee change of status for Ashley Ammon, or Ammon. As of May 6th, 2018, it's a resignation, she was permanent, part-time Correctional Officer at a rate of $13.12 an hour.
I will second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next would be the appointment to the Board of Health.
I will make a motion to reappoint Joyce Kicks to the Board of Health. She served a partial term, and so now would be reappointed for the full term.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have two applications for use of courthouse grounds. I, Julie, I got yours first, and so I contacted the second applicant, and they were fine with removing, and they'll reschedule for another day. So, yep. So I have an application from Julie Dunn for application of the courthouse grounds for June 30th, 2018, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
I will make a motion to approve the application.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Anything to add, Julie? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next I have is the authorization for weekly withdrawals for Blue Cross Blue Shield.
I will make a motion to approve the authorization for direct weekly withdrawals for payment of claims and fees by Wilmark.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, I have a discussion of a proposed resolution for utilization of local option sales tax funding in support of the Actley Economic Development Group and Iowa Falls Area Development Group. And there was a little bit of language that needed to be changed, there was no sunset date on it, so it was automatically renewed, and my fear was if there wasn't something saying it needed to be renewed, that it could put us into a financial, you know, fiscal dilemma if the money wasn't there and it was automatically renewed. So I'm going to have Daryl look at the proposed resolution and then bring it back for full consideration at a future meeting.
Okay, so we need to table it then?
Yeah, I'm, this is just for discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If you bring it back at a later meeting because of budgetary, IFADC will be approving their budget at their meeting in July.
Okay.
And we would want to make sure that if there is a decision, one way or another, that it's included. So I don't know when we plan to bring it back.
Hopefully by next week.
And are you meeting when?
The 3rd. Yep. Thank you, Cindy. Yep. Any further discussion on that resolution? Okay. Item 20 is the Hardin County Risk Analysis Disaster Recovery and Emergency Mode of Operations Document that Central Iowa Community Services utilizes to maintain continuity of operations in the event of a disaster. Lynn Adams is here. Anything else you'd like to explain about the document or?
No, I think it's, we review the document every year, there were just some slight changes, we had a staff change, and then Micah reviewed it, and I don't, I don't remember that she made any changes, but it's just basically annually we're asked to review it, and we send it into the region.
Okay. Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the Hardin County Risk Analysis Data Disaster Recovery and Emergency Mode of Operations for the Community Services Office.
I will second that.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
On the bottom of that, it gives the dates.
Yeah. The updating, effective.
I just wanted to make sure we had some dates on it.
Okay. All in favor of approving the document, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, item 21, I have a request for joint meeting with the city of Iowa Falls today. Mayor Newguard and City Minister Jody Anderson joined us just to talk about that request for a meeting, so.
Sure.
Thanks for coming down.
You bet. So we, the council was a little caught off-guard with, with the plans for county shed there, and their frustration was not with the county supervisors. They had extended sewer services to that property, which costs us $110,000 for construction, and then the engineering costs on top of that. So they have other locations that they would like to suggest to the county for possible location of a county shed up there. They would like to work with Grand Givante to see if that private, or property could be developed for economic development, residential, which would be best for the county and the city, school districts and everyone. So they really don't need a joint meeting, they just wanted me to come down here and kind of explain the city's position on that. Obviously, Grand Givante can sell the property to whoever they wish to, you know, if the county wanted to proceed with that. They obviously could also, but...
Right.
We would, just because of the investment we made on behalf of Grand Givante, we would rather see that properties for some kind of an economic development, which would hoop everybody.
Right. So if, if, there would be no reason at this, at this time for a joint meeting. Okay. Yeah, and I just think there is a misconception that there is already paperwork signed or dollars and cents, and, and, you know, the only communication that the counties had with Grand Givante was their request for bonding. And come to find out, the reason they needed us for bonding is because of our jurisdiction over the property in Iowa Falls and Actley, and they would like to have, you know, knocked it out with one bond. Come to find out, they were more interested in, you know, potentially moving or liquidating that property in Iowa Falls, and then they only needed one bonding authority. And so I think the way the two entities got tied up was through that bonding meeting rather than any, looking at any property. And I know Taylor had met with Cindy and got a list of available properties several months ago, which none included Grand Givante because it wasn't, you know, on the market. So, yeah, we would, you know, be interested in any location that was fiscally feasible, but logistically best for the engineer and secondary roads department, so, yeah. But thank you for coming down and explaining.
Sure.
So, thank you.
I would just assume they meet with the engineer, he's the one that...
I'm not tied to any specific locations, so.
This, this is something that's been going on for years, talking about that with the Iowa Falls shed and the shape it's in, the Actley shed that's, we haven't had anybody in for five years now.
I'll look pretty close by.
And to look at relocating, if it's even possible, to where you could build a shed that would house multiple areas. With the sheds we have, they're too small, some of them are even too small to even put the equipment in with the blades. And it's a beginning process.
Yeah, I know, the new tenures and feature shirt, and I still don't know too much about sites in Iowa Falls, but we would, you know, be very excited to have a county shed located in Iowa Falls and then work to help you find sites that we work with you, just at that particular site, we put quite a bit of investment into, which...
Takes away from us, right?
Yeah. What's that?
Takes away from us.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, because we have a 12-inch water line and just bringing sewer services to that area, we would like to see some kind of, you know, development of that property other than for county uses, so.
Yep. I agree.
It would work well for everybody.
Yep. I'm glad we're on the same page and that we could, you know, now advert some of the misknown misinformation and, and the hearsay that's out there, so thank you both.
Thank you for pointing this out.
Yeah. Okay. Item 22, I have a list that the assessor's office has provided with ineligible homestead and military credits to be disallowed for 2017 payable 2018.
I will make a motion to approve the requests, or the, the list from the assessor on ineligible homestead and military credits to be disallowed. To be allowed and disallowed.
I will second.
Okay. Have a motion, a second, any discussion?
As listed.
Yes, as listed.
Okay. All in favor of approving the list as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next I have is two changes of status from the recorder's office. Hi, Lori.
I'll make a motion to approve the change of status for Laura Eisenhower at an hourly rate of $12 an hour. She was hired, and she's the administrative assistant in the recorder's office. And that will be as of July 1st, 2018.
I will second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then I have one additional change of status in the recorder's office.
I'll move to approve the change of status, Cheryl Lawrence, Department Recorder, she's a deputy recorder. The listed amount has been changed to 46.5, effective July 1st.
I'll second that.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, we'll go ahead and recess to conduct employee performance review. I'll go ahead and...
Oh.
You know what, yeah, let's, we'll take...
We got four minutes.
Yeah. Other business.
I just wanted to let you know that we do have one tax that we have to abate per court order.
Okay.
We don't have to have it on the agenda, there doesn't have to be a resolution, but I like to let, let you know that we are abating a tax. The city of Iowa Falls took a property over for abandonment, so I do have to abate those taxes.
What's the amount, do you know?
$240.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to introduce Angela Delariva, who is the new Actley Executive Director for Actley Development Commission.
Hi, Angela.
Welcome, thank you.
She began on Monday this week, so.
All right, good.
Would you like to stand up and give a speech? No, I'm kidding.
Now, don't give her a bad time.
Not today. Any other business? Okay, so at this time, I will go ahead and ask for recess and grab Julie.
All right. I'll make a motion to recess.
Okay. Okay, we're reconvened, it is 11:02 AM. We are out of closed session. At this time, we're going to address item number 14, which is the approval of the fiscal year 1819 salaries. And there are a couple amendments. County Engineer Taylor Rawls here to discuss three amendments, or actually two amendments to the salaries that we'll consider to update on the list, so go ahead, Taylor.
So I had turned the sheet into Kelly before you guys had made your decision on the performance-based review, and she had told me afterwards, so there's five employees, and we talked about three of them. So the other two, it's my bad for not talking to Kelly about those two. She had taken the numbers I gave her and not what it was according to, so they both got high enough where it was a percent and a half on top of the cost of living increase. So I did the math, and BJ has the numbers there in front of him. It wasn't a lot, but I feel like it's what they're due, so I think they should get what you guys have decided for them to get.
Okay.
So the amended amount for Joe Donald would be $51,665.0. Angela Sylvie would be $38,220.0. So that would be, in addition, it'll be recorded, we just completed Jody Mesh's performance evaluation per our policy, and his wage will be $61,315.0. These will be recorded in the auditor's office, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the salary list.
And Cheryl, it'll all be reflected here, Cheryl Lawrence would be $46,500.0. Sorry. So I have a motion.
Can you repeat the motion, please?
I will make a motion to approve the salary list as, as amended or as changed as stated by BJ, and he has the official list.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, any discussion?
I, I do, I don't recall, I, I know you have some employees that had some added contracts.
It was, it's taken care of.
It is, it's here.
Those are the three that I talked to Kelly about.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, I know we skipped them last year, and I don't want to miss them again.
Yep, they are good to go.
Okay.
Okay.
I was thinking those, if it's the three contracts, I was thinking, I thought those had expired.
This is the last one, it said through fiscal year 19.
Oh, all right. I'm wrong then, okay.
I wasn't sure if they're up or not, I just wanted to make sure it got handled.
Yeah, I discussed it with them, and I think, I think this is the last time, guys, and they all agree, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
All in favor, ask Nancy, roll call?
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
BJ?
Aye. Okay. One other thing that I forgot in other business was, I do want to address the article in the Times Citizen today regarding the county's failure to keep minutes from work session-type meetings. I think it's important that the public understand that I went back to 2007 meetings, and the practice has never been to keep the minutes since 2007. While I can't pinpoint exactly how many county attorneys we've had, that, you know, we've never been instructed that our work sessions where no decisions, no contracts are signed or executed have ever been recorded. But in going along with the Freedom of Information Act, I think it's important that the public understand that Hardin County goes above and beyond where we need to be in terms of providing public notice. The basic public notice is to put it on the rotunda bulletin board. There's no requirement that we record and post the videos to YouTube, and I think it does a great public service, but when we get feedback that our equipment was out of service last week, you would have believed it was the end of the world. And so that's a very difficult thing to have to, you know, try to explain to the public what the true Freedom of Information Act is. So going forward, we've consulted with the county attorney, and he has instructed us and given us a template to utilize with our board secretary to make sure that those meetings are properly documented and, and recorded in the right fashion. One of the things that was also brought up to me is... One of the things that was also brought up to me is we're going to have to look at what is ministerial and what is social and what is true county business. And unfortunately, it appears that there are such fine lines that we are going to likely need to entrust the services of the board secretary on a more frequent basis. And with that being said, I, I think in the near future, we need to discuss bringing the board secretary under the Board of Supervisors guise because it is going to entail quite a bit more work. And, you know, if we do travel to an economic development meeting in Iowa Falls, our board secretary is going to need to attend that with us. It's not as easy as signing a permission slip or fill in the blank. And so, a lot of this caught me off guard because the Iowa Falls Time Citizen wrote an amazing editorial about how great it was to have the Harden County Board of Supervisors sit with the Iowa Falls and Ackley Development Corporations in the same room. But then, less than two weeks later, you know, the, the means in which we record the minutes were then scrutinized. And so, moving forward, I think we need to look at what the logistics are and what the public scrutiny is going to be in how we conduct business to avoid any litigation or public perception of failure to be transparent.
My comment is, when you're talking work sessions, it makes me immediately think of the budget. When we're working on the budget in work sessions, I'm not real sure how the board secretary is going to take those minutes because it's just discussing departments' budgets and also areas where there is no actual department. It's just us talking about what it's going to cost, what we need to budget for this or for that. And that may change throughout the process, so I don't know how someone is going to follow that whole process. I just, when we say work session, it's not really like a decision is always made. It's just discussion regarding a topic, which, like I said, my first thought comes to budget. So, I guess those, whenever we schedule a work session, we always give a 20, at the minimum 24-hour notice. Usually, it's more than that. The media is welcome to come to any of those work sessions, but it seems it's a very rare occasion that anybody does, if ever. So, yeah, it's, it's going to end up costing the taxpayers to have someone sit in work sessions where it's just kind of discussion and rarely any decision made because if we, if it is a decision to be made, that happens usually in a board meeting. So, it, like B.J. said, it may.
It does happen in a board meeting.
Yes.
Did you say usually happens?
Okay, yeah, it happens in a board meeting. I mean, we might discuss budget figures, but before, I mean, we don't approve those until we approve the budget. So, it may end up costing more to hire either a full-time board secretary or additional help in the auditor's office if Nancy moves to, to be full-time under the board. That's just something that's.
Yeah. But I, I, I agree. I think.
But we have to obey the law.
Right. And the law costs money to obey and enforce and have that oversight. So, some of the examples, you know, when Renee and I traveled to Columbus, Ohio to meet with APTA Health, you know, where does it stop that, you know, the board secretary will need to travel to that event? Ministerial is, you know, easily arguable, but is ministerial worth a court case? Absolutely not. So, at this point, I think Harden County has a chance, moving forward today, to have been made an example of and it's going to get the attention of other entities, both on the city, township, county and regional and a lot of other entities, that there are people watching and that, yeah, the, the wheels of government are going to slow down tremendously because of this. And that's okay. I want people to see how government operates. I want to assure them that there's no collusion or conspiracy to do anything, but at the same time, they're going to have to understand the expense of doing that.
Oh, I remember here a few years back on department head meetings. I believe the question was asked, do we need to take minutes for department head meetings? I think the question was asked to Kristy Harsburger, is that right? I, I can't guarantee that, though, but for some reason, I thought the results was that, no, they do not need to be taken.
Yeah.
And that's, otherwise, I know the question had been asked, otherwise, we would be taking minutes every time. So, the answer must, but I can't, I don't know if it came from Kristy or not.
And I, I don't think there is any malicious intent because just randomly picking, I think it was September 7th, 2007, there's a 10:00 a.m. regular board meeting and at 9:00 a.m., Irv Miller, Ed Bear and Jim Johnson met with somebody from an animal rescue league or something and comparing the agenda to the minutes, there's no minutes for that meeting with the, you know, the animal shelter. You know, there's, I looked at minutes from the economic development people when they met with us. There's no minutes from those. The one thing regarding economic development, those meetings are going to be compromised as well because there's a lot of economic developers that don't want things made public. And so, it could hamper economic development in Harden County. Not to say that there are not means of delegating individual supervisors to meet with potential entrepreneurs in the county, but I think it makes more sense to utilize Iowa code to have those meetings in.
Or either that or we'll have more closed session meetings.
Right. Absolutely. So, but I just wanted to acknowledge the article in the paper and, and, yeah, the times are changing and it's going to utilize additional taxpayer resources and assets at this point, so. That's all I have.
More for other business? I mentioned something to Taylor. We were working on a contract with him. Will that be on next week's agenda?
I hope so.
How about, how about that current handbook? We were looking at changing, some changes in the handbook. I believe a copy's been, I think you got a copy sent to you from Mike, but not an updated one.
Okay.
But if you didn't.
What do you mean, not updated? I don't.
From yesterday's or the day before emails.
Oh, no.
But I think he had one ready for us to do.
Okay. So, I'll look at that and communicate that with Nancy to, if that needs to be added to the agenda.
For next week?
Yes.
And a third one. We've been doing the every other week. It seems with drainage today and the meetings, do we want to go back to every week meetings?
I would, I would agree. It's been very confusing. We've had to call special meetings.
And put that on the agenda for next week to talk about as well.
Right. And we'll just set the dates. And I know there's times where the meetings, we have, have had complaints or concerns from the media that they show up for a three-minute meeting, but knowing what I know today, we can't, you can't have it both ways.
All right.
And I did, I've received phone calls from one member of the media, Joel McCall up at KLMJ, that are very gracious that, you know, we have the video of the, the main meetings and he can skim through, find what he wants and if he has questions, he can follow up. So, you know, as long as that's available. But yeah, I have no problem adding regular meetings back every week and.
Well, I just wanted for discussion for next week.
Yeah. Yep, I think we can.
I would agree.
Discuss that, so, yep.
That's all I had for other business. Taylor, what do you got for us?
Every week sounds good.
Okay.
And there's never a time crunch trying to play the game of every other week, I think.
Right.
It'd be easier.
Yep. So, all right. I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.